And welcome for the Monday, October fifth regular select board meeting. I will be given by reading a script confirming that we can have this meeting not in person. So this is the select board chair, Tom LaCusa. I'll be confirming that all members of persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mark Strange.
Here.
Steve Morantz.
Here.
Richard Foster.
Here.
And Mark Gold.
Here.
And staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lynn Simmons.
Here.
Paul Casters.
Here.
Deb House.
Here.
Okay. I don't believe we have any anticipated speakers on the agenda. But I know there's some folks here who are available to comment. So this is an open meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board as being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, two thousand and twenty. Due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth and due to the outbreak of the COVID nineteen virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID nineteen virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded. So the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Long Meadow Select Board is convened by telephone conference, video conference via Zoom as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. For resident comments after their announcement and general announcements, I will afford public comments as follows. I will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once I have a list of all the public commentators, I will call on each by name and offer three minutes for any comments. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, be as you always be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All the materials for this are available on the agenda posted on longmeadow.org. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide comments, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields a floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in a call with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted a roll call vote. And so our first item on the agenda is announcements. And Lynn, I don't know if you have any announcements for this.
I do. I have several. I wanted to announce that flu clinics have been set up. An appointment is required and can be made online at longmeadow.org/flu. Or you can call the Board of Health at four one three five six five four one four zero. Residents are strongly encouraged to fill out forms in advance of attending a clinic for their appointment. You can get those forms on the website as well. If you're unable to print them out at home, you can complete the forms at one of the clinics. Again, it's appointment only. The next clinic is tomorrow from twelve to four. There's one on Thursday from three thirty to six thirty. And there's one on Wednesday, October fourteenth from three thirty to six thirty. These are all held at Greenwood Center in the over sixty room. Early voting is scheduled to start on Saturday, October seventeenth. All of the times are posted on the town website. They vary, but on the weekends, Saturday and Sunday, it's ten to two. And then Monday and Tuesday, the following week is eight to five. Longer hours on Wednesday, October twenty first from nine to seven. Thursday, October twenty second, eight to five. Friday, the twenty third, eight to one, and again on the weekend, ten to two. Early voting ends on October thirtieth. I would encourage people to check the website for those hours. That will also be done at Greenwood Center. And just to add quickly on that, if you did request the ballot by mail, those ballots are being prepared to be mailed out. We just received our first batch from Secretary of State and they are getting mailed out. About fifteen hundred were mailed out in the last day or so, and the rest of them will be mailed as soon as they come in. It's not too late. The ballots are being mailed now. The town is seeking a resident to serve on the local commission, local casino mitigation advisory committee. There's information on the town website about that. We would welcome a letter of interest from a resident by October twenty third so the board can make that appointment. And the COVID nineteen community impact survey is a survey that the Department of Public Health has put together. The link is on the town website. Any resident over the age of fourteen in Massachusetts is encouraged to fill this survey out whether you've had coronavirus or not. It's going to help gather data on just the impact of the virus on the community. And if we have enough results for Long Meadow, they will provide us Long Meadow specific data. That's all I have for announcements tonight.
Okay. The only thing I would add to that is that the town, a home in the town, the Bruyong Mansion, was recognized by the Historic District Commission at the state level for saving a hundred and thirty-five year old mansion. And there was an article in Sunday's paper that talked about what a great job they've done with the restoration. I know that it was a big issue for this town to allow the change in zoning that allowed that property to reach this point where it's restored and hopefully it will be able to generate the income to keep it in that in that place. So congratulations to the people, the folks who restored that home.
Tom, Tom, can I ask a question for Lynn about her report?
Oh, well, these are just announcements.
Right, but in terms of the early voting, or if you got, if you get an absentee ballot in the mail.
Sure.
I want to make sure that students know, students, that residents know that they can drop it off at Town Hall through the slot there. That is the case, right?
Correct, yes. The mail slot at Town Hall.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Stephen. Any other clarifications that people want to make? All right, great. So we've done the announcements. Next is we have resident comments. Lynn, do we have any residents who've identified and want to make comment?
If anyone has a comment they would like to make, they can put something in the chat or they can raise their hand or unmute yourself.
That's, that's, um, next would be the interviews for the Historic District Commission. And we have a couple of folks, Robert Helmersen is applying for the Historic District Commission. Are you here, Robert?
Yes, I am.
Great. If you could just please give us your, your name and your address and why you're interested in becoming part of this commission.
Okay, sure. Thank you for this meeting tonight. I only recently learned about a vacancy on the commission. It's an area that I've had some interest in for a long time. I'm currently serving on the Board of the Stores Library and also on the Long Meadow Cultural Council. And I've been very interested pretty much through my lifetime with historic preservation. My wife works at one of the museums, the Museum of Springfield History. And a number of our friends are involved in historic preservation. And I think what really attracted me to consider the, the commission is that, you know, just having been a resident here, I'm, oh, by the way, I'm at eighty-four Burbank Road, sorry. Having been here for twenty-two years, we just love the town. We love the condition and the appearance and the diligence of maintaining the historic district every time we go there. And I just felt that if there was a need to serve, I'm retired. I've been retired a couple of years. And I'm very interested in these kinds of activities. My only other real activity right now is, of course, with the library in lockdown, at least for a while still, probably. I've been involved with music history and music appreciation programs at Stores Library. And otherwise, I've been serving on the investment committee, the finance committee. And more recently, the property committee for Stores Library. Just interested in preservation and would like to be part of a group that sees to it that everything is maintained in a proper fashion.
Thank you, Robert, and thank you for your service on all the other activities in town. Are there any questions for members of the board, Robert?
Yes, Mark.
Thank you. Again, I also want to thank you for applying. I just want to make sure that, that you're, you're aware of the distinction between the three groups that we have, which is the Historic District Commission, which is what you're applying for. The Historic Commission and the Historic, History, Long Meadow Historical Society. Because they do different things and they work in different ways. And the Historic District Commission is more, I'd almost say a zoning, zoning bylaws kind of, kind of a society. I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that.
Well, I, I was actually not aware that there are three different segments. I knew some of the work of the Long Meadow Historical Society. I've known Alan Betsy McKee for a long time and Jim Moran. But I was not familiar with the third entity that you're, you're mentioning. I'm not sure what that is.
Yeah, well, it's a historic commission and the historic commission has more to do with the history of Long Meadow and as opposed to the Historic District Commission, which is specific to the houses in the historic district of Long Meadow, which is not just the green. There's a couple of other extensions, but anyway, I, you know, it may be worth just checking out those, those distinctions on your behalf.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, hearing none. Robert, thank you for coming forward. We will, you know, be making a decision in probably two weeks.
Okay.
We'll get back to you then. Thank you.
Okay, I'm signing off. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. And now we have individual interest in the Energy Sustainability Committee, which is David Morris. Are you here, Mr. Morris?
Yeah.
All right, could you give us your name and your address and your interest in being part of this committee? Oh, you're muted, I think. You, I can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Now we can. Please start.
I hit, I hit the button wrong. It's electronics. Anyway, I live at fifty-eight M N years and I'm a retired physician's assistant and I've got some time. And over the last few years, I, I did participate and I'm very interested in energy and sustainability issues. Steve got me into voting solar on my house. I think I was, we were the first people to sign up. We have a house that's, hopefully we're trying to make it sustainable as possible. I'm trying to learn about how the town does that. I was part of the Long Meadow Transitions Group. And I have, used to sit in on some of the energy and transitions meetings. So I'm aware of Mark Gold's work on getting the, the lighting posts, the light poles issue finally resolved in a good way for the town. I was back when I started looking at the high school. Many years when the high school was built, I thought there was a rooftop that could have been solarized at the time. Energy, solar energy costs were a lot higher back then and it didn't seem to be included in the architectural drawings of the high school. And I think we failed a little bit also with the senior center and the new, I think the senior center, the costs didn't include putting solar on it, from my understandings of going to the meetings. Mary Best's discussion is that it's ready to have solar and you just need to raise some money and make it happen. It's a challenge for the town. I'm interested in trying to figure out how to do, make that happen. And other things we can do to make it sustainable and energy independent. When the D P W building comes down, hopefully we can make so, put solar down in the brownfield where the, that's a project that has been talked about for a while and looking forward to making it happen.
Great.
That's my interest. I'm not an engineer.
Well, it's always good to have more voices looking for energy efficiency and energy independence. So thank you for asking to be on this committee. Any questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, I would say that folks must know you. I know you've been around town. I, I know I've met you several times. And so what we'll do is we'll decide and we'll get back to you in a couple of weeks when we have our next meeting.
Thank you for listening and good luck with your business tonight.
Okay, thank you. All right. And so now we will move on to select board comments. Do we have any?
I'm Mark Gold. I have, I want to thank the Recycling Commission for the successful paper shredding event held at the high school this past Saturday. Hundreds of cars were, were, you know, were allowed to come through. Tough doing that during a pandemic and I think it's a great service to provide for the residents of town from everything I could see was quite successful.
Thank you. Any other select board comments?
Yeah, Tom, I have one. Just want to follow up on what everybody else has been saying. I had the opportunity to talk with the town clerk earlier this week. And she actually sent me out about a page and three quarters of information on the voter by mail. And basically the thing that she's emphasizing over and over and over is if you plan on voting by mail, do it now. Don't wait till the last minute. There are some extended deadlines on this, but there's a lot of small, little bitty intricate procedures that have to be followed for your, for your ballot to be properly recorded and, and counted in the election. If you have any questions whatsoever, the information is online. You can also call the town clerk, you can email the town clerk. You could email any select board member and they could help you direct you to the proper location too. But the key is right now, if you do plan on voting by mail and you've not started the process, you need to do it by tomorrow because there are noted delays in the systems and the timelines and the procedures are fairly persistent on this to have your votes counted. Thank you.
Okay. Any other select board comments?
Yes, Tom, I have a comment.
Yes, Steve.
I'm not sure the board is aware, but two days from now, October seventh is the theoretical closing date for Eversource to take over Columbia, Columbia Gas, at least as far as our state's D P U is concerned. Just want to let folks know it's not going to be Columbia Gas, like the Eversource gas. Not quite sure how long it's going to take between D P U saying it's okay and the actual takeover taking place. But in particular, I want the, the select board to know that the, the New England Pipeline Awareness Group, which truly does not want to have any more gas pipeline expansion in the state and certainly in our neck of the woods, might be talking to us about the fact that Eversource said they'd listen to us, they hear our concerns, and hopefully they actually will. So it's this, you know, the whole thing with the metering station and the expansion of the pipeline down to Springfield. It's been on hold, but it's not going to go away necessarily. And so it's conceivable that we as a select board may be asked to put our opinion in on this. And just a general, a general information update on what appears to be happening. But the D P, D P U has fast-tracked this and I believe as of this week, certain concern emerging will go through an update.
Thank, thank you. Any other select board comments? Okay, I have none, so we can move on to the town manager's report. Lynn Simmons.
Thank you. So tonight I have a few items to update you on. Wolf Swamp Fields, we received eleven bid submissions for the renovation project. The bid was awarded to R A D Sports. Construction is expected to start soon with a substantial completion date of May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. The community house roofing project has started. The work on the projects is being done with CPA funding. It's expected to take about a month to complete. The satellite offices remain open at the community house, but there may be intermittent enclosures to accommodate the roofing work. You may have noticed it as you drive by the community house that there's a large roll-off dumpster there. But the satellite offices are still open and the signage has been adjusted. We received a election support grant from the Center for Tech and Life. They made these grants available for COVID nineteen response grants to provide funding to local election offices to ensure that we have critical resources to safely serve every voter. This is going to assist the town clerk and the Board of Registars and Registars in hiring additional staff, training, and election assistance hardware. The grant was awarded in the amount of five thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars, which may not seem like a lot of money, but given the budget of the elections section of the town clerk's office, it's about thirteen percent of that budget. The capital improvement program internally kicked off on September fourteenth, I'm sorry, twenty-fourth. And department heads are now going to be preparing project submissions and those are due the week of October twenty-second. And then sometime that week after, I will be meeting with the department. October twenty-second. And then sometime that week after, I will be meeting with departments to review their project submissions and then formalizing my memo to the capital planning committee so we can start this process for FY twenty-two. That's, that's what I have for a report tonight, Tom.
All right, great. Any questions from anyone on the select board? Comments? Okay, well, that's just the report, obviously. Thanks, Lynn. So we will move into old business. We have minutes that we need to approve, nine twenty-one, a special meeting, or I'm sorry, a regular meeting. Do we have a motion to accept those minutes?
And will we accept the minutes of the September twenty-first, two thousand twenty regular meeting in the select board?
Okay, second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Call, vote, Deb House?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay. And we need a motion for the nine twenty-three special meeting?
Will we accept those minutes?
Okay, and is there a second?
Back in.
Okay. Any discussion on those? Hearing none. Deb will take a roll call vote.
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Dane.
Richard?
I'm staying.
Okay, great. And now we go to the DPW site, E twenty-one, town's effort to recover response costs related to the asbestos cleanup and remediation of one seventy Dwight Road. And Lynn, do you want to present the information we received in this correspondence?
Sure. I will summarize this letter, but just for people watching, a copy of it is attached to the agenda. That's linked on the town website in case you did want to read it word for word. But essentially, the council, the labor firm that the town has hired to help us with this twenty-one E claim, has provided a letter to the select board updating on where we are related to the site cleanup costs and the legal matter that we're pursuing. So this, the board has been briefed on a lot of this over the last year or so in executive session. We're now at a point where a public conversation needs to happen and a vote needs to happen. So, let's see, twenty-one E, Mass. General Law Chapter twenty-one E sets out a procedure that the town has undertaken that's necessary and appropriate for response actions to remediate the hazardous material, the asbestos that was at the site. The procedure must be filed, followed before a party can file a lawsuit and it requires an exchange of information. And that is what the board is in the middle of right now. So the attorney states that they had notified the former owners and operators of the property of the town's response cost claim in letters from March twenty twenty and September twenty twenty. The notices, it included substantial, substantial documentation of the response actions that the town undertook and the related costs associated. So the response costs incurred, including contractor delay costs, amount to approximately four million dollars. The attorneys have formally recommended to the select board with this letter here that the town participate in a mediation of the town's response cost claim against the former owners, operators of the property. They also point out that in addition to the possibility of resolving the claim at mediation and thus avoiding the substantial costs and uncertainties of litigation, the town's good faith participation in mediation under Chapter twenty-one E will provide the town with an opportunity to recover its legal fees and costs should the mediation fail to resolve the dispute. So I think that's something really important to point out, this going through this process in twenty-one E. Whether we think that this will be successful or not opens up, as long as we participate in good faith, allows us to pursue, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought here, allows us to pursue the legal fees, the recovery of the legal fees for this. So that, that is really important to point out. And so in order to comply with open meeting law, the board has to deliberate and vote on this decision to mediate this matter in open session. And at the point that the mediation process, if the board chooses to go forward with this, reaches an end point, the recommendation would be to come back to the board to further deliberate and vote in open session before the, before the town would be bound by anything in the proposed agreement arising out of that mediation. So this is just a vote to enter mediation pursuant to Chapter twenty-one E.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to, to forward, you know, that we will participate in this mediation process.
I'm Mark Gold. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the recommendations of Town Council, Egan, Flanagan, and Cohn in the matter of pursuing recovery of response costs, the remediation of asbestos at one seventy-nine Dwight Road by entering into, by participating in mediation of the town's response cost claims against the former owner, operators of the property.
Okay, do I have a second?
Back in.
Okay. Any discussion on this? Okay, hearing none.
Can I just say?
Sure, Deb. Or, Mark, sorry.
This, I only want to say something because there's a lot going on here and people at home are probably saying, I can't believe this thing's going through with no discussion. I think people at home, as Lynn said, but I just want to reiterate, we've had a lot of discussion about this in, in executive sessions and closed discussions. We've had discussions with our attorneys. And so this isn't just, yeah, we're just pushing it through. There's been a lot of discussions on that. So I think people should understand that as we go forward with the vote.
Thanks, Mark. And just to remind people, because when we say we have discussions in private in these special meetings, it's because it is a legal process that we need to do with, you know, in executive session. It would be a disadvantage to the town to have these in open meetings. But, you know, there are these points along the line where we have to have an open meeting vote. And this is one and there will hopefully be another in the future. But maybe the mediator will solve all this, that would be great. So, yes.
Maybe Lynn can give us a three-sentence explanation, which should we not vote to do because what would that mean if we said we're not interested in what our attorney is proposing? That might help the public understand what we're doing here.
The biggest piece of this is by, in good faith participation in the twenty-one E process, that would allow us to pursue our legal costs if it goes to further litigation. So the F, the, the goal is to mediate and, you know, anytime you try to mediate something, you try to come to an agreement. If that doesn't happen, then we will pursue litigation.
Great. Yep. That sounds good. Any other discussion before the vote? Okay, so Deb House, will you, will you call a vote?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Mike Strange?
Yes.
All right. The next is to approve the appointments to the Coalition for Racial Justice Task Force. And we also have a person for the Energy Sustainability Committee. And so let's just look at this. We have the, so we did get a message with select board choices for the racial justice appointment. And we had two individuals who wanted to appoint all ten who were interviewed. And we had some people who wanted to exclude several members and one who, you know, we do a vote of nine, they would go for that and then one person didn't respond. So I guess we would look for a motion to, you know, about accepting the folks and, and do we have any motions on the floor?
I'll make a motion that the select board accept all ten applicants and interviewees for the task force.
Okay. Any second to the motion? I'll second the motion. Okay, and discussion? Mark, did you want to?
Yeah, so, you know, again, I, I value very highly anybody who steps forward to contribute their time and their talents to the town. Anytime we exclude Bonn Peters, it has a chilling effect and everybody else who might be interested in coming forward. I think we need to encourage people to, to participate, but particularly with respect to this task force. It's, it's a, it's a very important group, a very talented group. I know that some of the members have concerns about Martin's comments that were made in the paper and that were brought up at the last meeting. I would just say this. I think if Martin had to do it over again, he probably wouldn't use those words. I think if anybody's been interviewed by the media, you don't really know what the rules are. You don't know what's on the record and off the record. You know, regardless of, regardless of that, he still should have kind of used the phraseology that he did. I do know that he would choose again different words if he had the opportunity to do so. A bigger picture on this, this is kind of a microcosm of what we have going on in our country right now. And that is a person of color who has made a gesture and action out of emotion and with the context of, of, you know, historical pain for himself and his family. And we have, you know, the select board trying to judge that, the manifestation of that, that historical pain. I would just appeal to the rest of, rest of the board members to kind of look past this one incident and invite Martin to join the group of ten. I think his voice will be very important. I think it's, obviously. And I think that the group needs him to be part of this ten as we figure out how to rectify errors of the past.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on this?
I have a comment. I, at one, at one level, I respectfully disagree with Mark Strange in that not everyone who volunteers for every committee is always qualified. I don't think just because someone says, I want to be in a committee and they want to volunteer means that whatever the committee they want to volunteer on, they're going to be, they're qualified to do that. But I don't think discouraged volunteerism at all. I'm not sure that the blanket, everybody's qualified to serve in any committee, committee they want to volunteer for. I'm not sure that's, that's exactly the, the language you want to use. With this particular committee, you know, I will accept what Mark said, but I think as an overall philosophy, you want to apply for a committee, go ahead and you're going to get it. I'm not sure that's exactly the stand for the board.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yeah, Tom, Mark Gold, I, I just want to speak to the direct motion. I think that we, we set a number of nine and I, I understand ten people applied, but I think we moved it to nine, you know. Again, just because people applied, you know, we, we set it at nine, I don't think we want to just continue to expand and expand the, the membership. So I'm going to vote against this motion so that we can get back to a committee size of nine.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, I will make a comment. And, you know, I know in the past, we've had committees that we have had to vote down and have specific members on and people off. And it's, it's not an easy process to tell people that they can't be on a committee. But we've done it, you know, and we've done it in committees, you know, like the building committee and various town committees that, you know, we're, we're dealing with, you know, important fiduciary matters really, you know, and making decisions that would affect the bottom line of our budget. This is a committee that will affect sort of our social growth. And the fact that there was conflict in the last meeting shouldn't, was, shouldn't be that surprising. Because when we look at real change, there's always conflict tied to growth, right? That you very few times, if you think of your own life and you think of communities, if there's no conflict, there isn't much growth. And, you know, we talked earlier about, I talked earlier about the mansion, you know, the Brewer Young Mansion. And there was a lot of conflict over that issue. And the town struggled through it and they had some growth and, and now we end up with a building that is winning awards. I do think a motion is going to be tied to coming up with some good policies that can help guide our town. When I looked at the, the people who interviewed, I saw the, each of them brought a unique strength to this committee that will help us move forward. Because I also see that the work we do in Long Meadow could be an example to our, our native communities. And as we know, Long Meadow has a history of setting an example to other communities in the area. And, and we've done it in a lot of different ways. And Westcom is one of those examples, but I know that there's plenty more. When you look at the mediation at the casino, we sort of set the trend and then everyone followed and people were pretty happy with the amount of support they got from the mitigation process. I believe that this committee has an opportunity to let Long Meadow, you know, set the, set a good path to make change in our communities. And so I would not understand, I could not understand why anyone would not vote for all of these members that have applied. And that's basically how I feel. I, I don't understand why you wouldn't vote for them. It's, there is conflict, but conflict leads to growth. And, you know, like I think Mark said pretty clearly, you know, I think Martin kind of got jammed up with that comment. And I'm, I'm hoping that that conflict will lead to someone running for the select board in the future. You know, we've had a lot of unopposed elections and hopefully we can have someone perhaps from this committee who would apply for a future seat. So that's, that's my opinion. And so those are our, our comments. We, any other discussion on this before we move to the vote? All right, Deb.
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Richard?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mark Gold?
No.
Right. Well, thank you. And now we move on to the, and congratulations to the folks. I know some of you are listening. And what I will plan to do is we will need to have one person on that committee who will, you know, contact the town and, and they'll be given a Zoom account. And I've already talked to Ryan McCollum about that, who has extensive experience in government. And, and then when the committee starts to meet, they will decide who will be their elected officers and who will be the chair. But this is just a, it's just our point person as we get started. So the next will be the Energy and Sustainability Committee. And we have Manu Tiranay, who interviewed with us last time. Do we have a motion to? Um, do you have a motion to appoint her to a uh two or to a three year term?
So moved.
Okay, just second?
Second.
All right, uh, any discussion? Okay, um, Deb, will you take a roll call vote?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Markold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
So we are going to move on to the next section, which is a continued discussion. On the Charter Review Committee's recommendations for the Capital Planning Committee. We had a a document enclosed in our packet that um. Hopefully we'll clarify, but I I read this and I'm actually a little more confused. Because this doesn't even mention membership. Um, I know we've gotten some other documents. So I'm not sure. Because this is section seven, seven A.
Um, this is Markold. If if I could, I think the document that Lynn sent out was pretty. It's pretty good because there's a actually a new section two dash eleven that was proposed, and I think that's. One I wanted to to focus on. And if you look at that, you know, for the most part, I I thought it was, you know. Applicable, was good. I would certainly vote to accept it with a a few changes to there. And I don't know if you'd like me to just talk about it. I'm I'm not going to make a motion at this point, but. Again, it says, uh, you know, the recommendation is that there shall be a capital planning committee consisting of seven members. Uh, and it says six appointed by the s- select board, one by the. Excuse me, but seven members, six appointed by the select board, one by the finance committee. I s- asked that that be. Just changed to seven members appointed by the select board. And then it goes on to say that uh appointments are staggered for three year terms. The extent possible, membership, background skills, and I think that's okay, but uh because it's only a recommendation. But it says, the purpose of the Capital Planning Committee is to review, monitor. Review and monitor the town manager's capital improvement plan. I'd much rather it say, review and prioritize and eliminate the word monitor. I don't think we need somebody to monitor the. Town manager's capital plan, but the intent has always been to put a a citizen's perspective on the product. Prioritization of that, so I'd like to see that added to that if we could. And it says, it's make recommendations to the. It says it make recommendations to the select board. The select board of annual uh expenditures at the annual town meeting. I think that what we wanted to do is, I I'd say, make recommendations to the select board. Uh, no later than four weeks prior to the final select board approval of the warrant. On which these expenditure recommendations are to appear. I think the intent was that we were trying to get the time. Limit on that that we have not gotten in the past, and that was n- not in there. And that's really. Jammed us up in the past, not getting a fine uh capital planning committee recommendation in a timely manner. So I would just change that. That thing of of make recommendations to select board of annual. Expenditures at the town meeting to be make recommendations to the capital. Make capital recommendations to the select board. With with timing of no later than four weeks prior to the final select board approval of the warrant on which these expenditure. Expenditure recommendations are to appear. So my 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 comments add some timing. It changes monitoring to prioritizing. I mean, that's based and and it talks about what we talked about before, which is six mem- seven members all appointed by the select board.
Okay, um, any other? Comments, Marks? There's Stephen Riss.
Uh, yes, I I basically agree with what Mark said with uh an exception. Uh, since the head of the committee, who's been the head for a while, uh, thought that five members as opposed to seven. Was the uh number he would prefer, and that's the number I think would be correct. So, and I think that not having a member of the finance committee on that board is fine. So I think. I would agree with Mark, except I would say, five members appointed by the board of select uh the select board. Uh, that would be the only addition that I would. The only change I would have is make it a five member committee, of which the current chair agrees with, so.
Okay, thanks. Any other comments from the select board?
Yeah, I I just reiterate my my support for 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 the seven person committee. Um, considering that was the uh ca- the Charter Review Committee's recommendation. And that's why I I would recommend we follow the recommendation.
Okay, and uh, Richard, any comments?
No, no comments.
All right, I um, I think those rec- your suggestions, Mark, are right on the money. Uh, thank you for uh putting the time in to go over this uh numerous times. And uh, the the issue of seven versus five, you know, as as we've had this discussion. When we talked about seven folks, I think we were at that point, you know, the Charter Review Commission was talking about. Having one member of those seven, you know, a person from the finance committee. And so now that that's no longer happening, I am leaning in the direction of of having five members as the. As Mr. Metz suggested, you know, in terms of making it easier to reach a quorum and um. You know, and they've been, you know, so I would, that's my only thing. Um, so. So, yes, Markold.
Well, with that comment, then I'd like to make a motion then, that we add section two eleven. And it say there shall be a capital planning committee and Lynn and uh Debbie, I can send this to you if you want. There shall be a capital planning committee consisting of five members appointed by the select board. Period. Appointments. Are staggered for three year terms. The extent possible, members should have background skills appropriate for capital planning. Such as construction, capital finance, and architecture. Purpose of the Capital Planning Committee is to review and prioritize the town manager's capital improvement plan. And annually report to make recommendations to the select board of capital expenditures. With a reporting date no later than four weeks prior to the final select board approval. Of the warrant on which these expenditure recommendations are to appear. And also say, followed that with the Capital Planning Committee shall review capital requests. Capital is defined as pursuant, and then the rest of that will follow as it's written.
Okay, do we have a second on the motion?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing done or calls for vote? Deb?
Um?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
No.
Steve?
Yes.
Markold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, you know, we've we've worked on this a while. Um, I'm glad we finally could. Move this on and maybe sometime in the next few years if COVID resolves itself, we'll actually be able to take in front of town meeting. Um, so thank you. Now, the next thing we have is uh Halloween during COVID nineteen. Uh, I had sent, you know, we were sent out a. A um. A PDF that talks about. About having uh folks taking part in any Halloween festivities to abide by the following recommendations. And, you know, we've made some regression recommendations that we talked about here. Um, we also have the the Mass Department of Public Health has issued guidance on celebrating Halloween. And then there's Center for Disease Control has issued guidance on Halloween, and there's connections on that. Uh, we also had our Department of Health Director, when she was here, uh, who made some comments saying that she thought. If people were to distribute candy, that the best thing might be to. Make sure they don't contaminate the candy, put it in a bag, and then have bags out and kids could just come up and take a bag. Now, um. I I guess the, I know it's uh it's always easier to be conservative in these kinds of situations. But, you know, I I think that the most conservative, because we have not had the official. Uh, announcement from our Board of Health, that I thought a conservative approach would be to put something in the uh. On the town website, such as this, with guidelines for people. Uh, and of course, the biggest one is that. You you do not have to participate in Halloween. You do not have to answer the door. No one is going to hold it against you. Uh, so, uh. What I would be looking for is just a motion to take this document and uh and put it on the town website. And I don't know if if we get someone to make a motion for that.
Question, Tom?
Yes, Steve.
Uh, in terms of block parties and things like that, I I'm looking at, are they always saying? Don't do this, they're forbidden to be done. I mean, you know, what about the mass gathering aspect as as opposed to the trick or treating aspect?
Well, luckily, we're not voting on that. But that is, you know, clearly discussed in the the documents. We have there, they have low risk activities, moderate risk activities, and higher risk activities. Um, and so participating in crowded, although those are indoor, indoor, um. Actually, they don't even put that down as a high risk, although we would think that that would be. But the uh, they say having a small group outdoor open air parade where people are just this one six feet is a moderate risk activity. But how you, if you have a larger crowd, how would you police that? Um, but. Uh, I don't believe we have anything on the agenda at this point, asking for us to make a decision on. On any uh, any other activities, but uh, you know, we we may see that. Yes, Markold?
Yeah, Tom, I'm gonna jump out of character here. I'm gonna make a motion that the town of Long Meadow ban door to door trick or treating. For Halloween of twenty twenty in response to COVID nineteen.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, and discussion?
Yeah, I'd I'd like to just start out, since I made the motion, I think. Couple of things. I think we all received a a letter today from a resident at Ellington Road. Which I thought was elegant and and articulate and in the issues that laid out that. Just because you say maybe you can do it, maybe you shouldn't do it. You know, we know Ellington and Farmington, I think the number that was in that letter was between seven hundred and a thousand. Kids come there. The town right next to us has banned trick or treating. That town is also red on the governor's mi- you know, map, which means it's a high risk community for transmission. We've done a lot of work over the last, you know, eight months or seven months to get down COVID rates. We've talked about that. Uh, you know, we're just now getting school back going and getting people into our children back into the schools. And I don't want to sound, you know, condescending here, but I think there needs to be adults in the room, us, that say. Yeah, it'd be really nice to have trick or treating and, but I think we need to protect the town from the people who won't protect the town from themselves. And that's the issue. It's not the people who are going to be responsible, it's the people who are going to be irresponsible, who are gonna, you know, who are going to be. Here doing things that they shouldn't do. I mean, we don't have a a process for enforcing all those rules, Tom, that you. You know, so elegantly laid out from the CDC and from the Mass Department of Health, you know. You know, if if five hundred people start amassing on Ellington and Farmington, what are we supposed to do? What are our police supposed to do? And to just tell those residents, that's okay, if you turn off your lights, don't worry, they won't come knocking on your door. You know, it there's a history here of of large crowds. I think it's been great. But I think, you know, of all the things we've been doing to try to hold down COVID nineteen, keep our children safe. This is the year to do, and and, you know, that doesn't mean that people won't find other ways to do it. But, you know, to say, if if you want to, you can turn your light on and answer the door, and if you want to. You can send your children door to door, oh, by the way, and then send them to school on on the next day. I don't think we want to do that. And so that's why I made the motion, and that's why I just I'd support this as much as I know. It's probably not popular with people who have little kids and kids who want to go trick or treating.
Okay, um, any follow up comments? Mark?
So, is the Board of Health gonna make um a a definitive statement on on Halloween, or is are we just gonna? Put out this kind of uh informational guide?
Yeah, I think I would say that we are not going to hear from the Board of Health, uh, unless we were to. We could try to ask them for something, but I think they would just say the CDC and the, you know, and folks have have given out. Their recommendations, um, so these, you know, that disease control, so. Um, no, I I don't think we can expect them to to say anything in addition to this. They haven't said we should ban it.
So if we if we're assuming that the Board of Health is going to suggest we. Um, abide by the CDC guidelines, um, don't the CDC guidelines allow for trick or treating? With um certain, certain recommendations? Am I reading that right?
Well, I I don't want to make that assumption. Uh, I can't speak for the Board of Health. Uh, all I know is that that uh the director of the board, you know, that our our Board of Health. Director has suggested, you know, that we use these. She sent an article to Lynn uh regarding this. Um, and so I guess, you know, so yes, that we have not heard anything from the Board of Health. That says that they want to ban, you know, or to make any changes whatsoever. We haven't heard anything from them. Lynn, I don't know if you have anything to add to this question, because I know that Beverly had, uh, you know, you were talking with her about Halloween, right?
Uh, I had requested that the Board of Health meet to take this topic up.
Trying to do that, I.
Correct.
Standing, correct?
Correct.
Essentially, they kicked the bucket down the road to us. And my, that's my my reading of it, Tom. Whether that's true or not, I, you know, that's my reading of it.
Make assumptions about them.
Yeah, I, yeah, they they chose not to to take any action.
Yes.
That that's a fact.
Yeah, um, I I have a question as to for for Markold. Um, actually, we live sort of between Farmington and Ellington, not on, not between Laurel and Long Meadow, but on the other side. And the thousand people that. Uh, in twenty five years been here, you know, as I was just talking about, block party, which I think we should ban. Um, you know, I I I don't know what numbers you're talking about, but.
Those weren't my numbers. Those were from, and and people who've been there say there are hundreds and hundreds, five hundred, seven hundred, a thousand kids. Who come to, that wasn't my number, Steve. That was what we got in the letter, and I believe that this is a ver- reputable person. And from all reports, Farmington, Ellington, that area between Laurel Street, Long Meadow Street. Are literally door to door people all night long. I don't know, Tom, I think you've been there in the past. Past evening, you know, so it's not me saying it, it's not me proposing it, Steve. I think, you know, my biggest concern is.
I didn't get the letter, so.
Oh, you didn't get the letter, okay. My biggest concern is that it's, you know, we've worked really hard to keep our school kids safe and to start our schools up. You know, Lynn, I'd be surprised to understand what, you know, you you know, Andy Fraser, who's our COVID, you know, advisor. Would have to say about something like this. He's really truly on the front line of trying to prevent COVID break outbreaks and and things like that. You know, the last thing we want to do is see Long Meadow move from white to yellow, orange or red on on that map and. This is the only way I know to prevent it, so that's why I'm I'm saying this. But yeah, Lynn, has has anybody talked to Andy about that?
Um, so Andy's role as the COVID compliance officer is internal for departments to um review guidance. Um, along with the schools department. Uh, so he hasn't reviewed it specific to trick or treating. But we we uh have had internal conversations, myself, the police chief and fire chief, uh, just about what. This would look like depending on what direction the town goes. Uh, we've had several requests for um. We have one block party request right now. We have a scavenger hunt request. We have a scavenger hunt request with photo, family photo opportunity request. So, all of those are kind of held in abeyance while I'm waiting to see what this conversation does tonight. But with regard to trick-or-treating, I mean, there has been concern that in a good situation, there's a large number of people that attend in Long Meadow. And in most cases, that's a good thing. In a pandemic, that may not be a good thing. I've been watching what other communities around us have been doing, because that will no doubt impact, you know, the ability of people to trick-or-treat. If they still want to partake in that activity, they'll be looking for other places to go. Springfield is not offering it. West Springfield will still allow trick-or-treating as of now. Westfield, I know, is having that conversation. I have not heard what East Long Meadow is doing. I'm just watching what's happening around us to see what the impact may be to us.
Okay, well, I would just like to say that, you know, Halloween has a long tradition of parents going out with their children, and, you know, for the most part, the younger kids. You know, the older teenagers might be the group that would sort of be their own. Now, you know, I guess I am not ready at this point to ban Halloween. I am ready to, to post these on our website. There might be a part where I would be willing to, you know, put a halt to festivities. At this point, I, I look at our, we have one area of town that could be problematic, and, and the rest of town would not be. The rest of town would operate just as it always has. And I think that, you know, it is outdoors, people are wearing masks, they can wear double masks. We can keep safe distancing, so, but the people who are out there walking around are the ones who are taking the greatest risk. And so, yes, I, I'm not sure how to do that. But as far as that one area of town where people will congregate, you know, traditionally, you know, I believe that we could find some way to redirect people. There's only so many streets that go into those, that area. And if there was signs posted and perhaps police presence saying, you know, "Halloween's canceled", in this area, there's no, no parade or no large party here this year. Hopefully, we could dissuade people from going down those streets. And perhaps those streets should be closed for that evening. And that would be a way to dissuade people from going in there. I'm not sure, but, you know, at this point, I, I'm not ready to, to stop Halloween completely. Any other?
Uh, Tom?
Yes, Richard Foster has not spoken yet.
Yeah, I, I had mentioned this last week. I have had the opportunity to be at one of the homes on the corner of Farmington and Laurel for the last three years. Last, last year, by the candy that we dispersed, we estimated we had at least 1,000 children. Social distancing impossible. It's impossible, if you haven't been there, you're dreaming, if you think you can control it. It's, it's extremely uncontrolled situation. As I say, 1,000 kids, and they're running all over the place. Ask your police department, check with them, see what they think. I think to have, to have our town, if you just say cut off two streets, I don't, I can't, I can't imagine the difference between that and saying we're just canceling the, the event, because the majority of the event takes place on those streets. I live on Captain Road, I'd be lucky if they had two people the entire night. I don't know how many you have over at your place, Tom, but they're not there. They're down at Laurel, Farmington, because that's where the action is in our town. And it, it is gonna be worse this year, believe me, because Springfield has shut down. And if we're the only community that's got a green light flashing, I, I can't even imagine what's gonna happen. And I think we're also putting our public service people in harm's way. I, I just think it's a bad environment. Plus, we don't know what our country, what shape we're gonna be in three weeks from now. I mean, we're starting to kick back up on COVID-19. Even our governor, we're, we're starting to warm back up in our state, so. That's why I agreed with Mark, and I, I, that's why I said last week, I, I think we should cancel it. I think it's the best, best interest of our entire community this year. Thank you.
Okay, and Mark Strange, are you gonna make another comment?
Oh, oh, yeah, I was, I was just going to ask if we could put on this guidance document that, that block parties won't be allowed this year. Because when you apply for a block party, then you can cut off the street with barriers, and it becomes more of a confined, in a, in a destined, confined area and a destination. It's not to say that people won't go there, though. But it won't be, it won't be quite the destination as it was previously. And people can turn the lights off if they don't want to participate. You know, the draw is, there's a lot of different features that are in the street, there's a lot of music. It's a party atmosphere, so if, you know, it'll be a lot less, obviously, like that without a, a block party permit. I'm just wondering if that might be, might be a way.
Okay, well, there's no motion on that yet, but we can put that in if, if we get to, if we talk about that. So, any other comments on Mark's motion regarding the banning of Halloween this year?
A question?
Yes, Steve, what else?
The select board says, "We don't want trick", you know, "We, we ban Halloween."
Yeah.
So, somebody takes out their two little kids and go knocking on doors, do they get arrested? I mean, what, what is the penalty for violating the select board's ban? Do we know what that is? I mean, do we have the legal, I mean, you go to jail. I, I want to know what the impact is for us saying, "We can't do this in our town", what does that mean? I mean, really, literally, we know?
Well, I would prefer the question to Mark Gold, it's his motion.
Oh, don't refer it to me, refer it to Lynn Simon, Simmons, Simmons. And also, how about the, what are they doing in Springfield, they banned Halloween? I mean, ultimately, Steve, somebody can come knock my door. The point is, I, I'm, nobody's gonna answer the door, and we don't, that's not the norm in this town this year if we pass this motion. And, you know, that, you know, we're not passing a bylaw, we're not passing a, we're not making it illegal, that I know of, maybe we are, I don't know. But, you know, is that, are they gonna get a, a civil ticket for solicitation, door-to-door solicitation? I don't know. That's what the police want to do. That's not my, that's not where I am. I think we set the policies and tell our police and fire department or first responders to enforce it.
So, if I could just speak to that real briefly, one thing I would just recommend is, if you want me to look into this with legal counsel, I'm happy to. We could postpone this until the next meeting. My concern, which is why I asked the Board of Health to take this matter up, is that we are in a public health pandemic, and a lot of the authority on how we respond to situations rests with that Board of Health. And my intention of bringing it to them was for them to have this conversation. If they felt that it was in the public health interest of the community to not allow door-to-door trick-or-treating, that they order that that activity not be permitted this year. And then, the police department would have the legal authority to enforce it, because it's in response to a public health crisis. In this situation, you don't have the authority of a Board of Health, because we have a Board of Health. And I don't know right now what the police department could enforce if you chose to ban door-to-door trick-or-treating. I was sitting here, you know, mulling over some of the governor's orders, which the police department does have authority to enforce. And the only one that comes to mind is group gatherings outside, and that right now is at 50. So, it would need to be a significant group of people in a somewhat compact area in order for them to enforce that. There may be others, I'm just, I don't know off the top of my head. But if you wanted to enforce purely the ban on trick-or-treating, I, I don't know that that's something the police department can do with the vote of the select board. I'm happy to look into it and get a response back at the next meeting.
But clearly, without that vote, there's nothing that's gonna happen. You know, they're getting people doing whatever they want to do.
I, I think I disagree with you, Mark, because if, if there is a limit to a group of 60 people outdoors, you know, the police could flash their lights and ask the crowd to disperse. And, and I think that that wouldn't be a big surprise to anybody. They say, you know, they have a speaker, they say you're over the crowd limit, you know, that you have to please disperse. And we're in a community that people will listen to the police. It isn't like, you know, I don't think people are gonna like start a revolution.
I would like to make a motion that we table Mark Gold's motion until the next meeting after our town manager once again tries to talk to the Board of Health to see if they will indeed make a recommendation, one way or the other, about this issue. We still have two weeks, it's still basically two more weeks before Halloween, so it's not like an emergency time. And I think that it would be really helpful if the Board of Health actually stepped up and gave us some guidance, if they're gonna do it. And if not, we can all discuss it two weeks from now. Hopefully, that might be okay with you, Mark.
Okay, is there a second for the motion to tables?
Second.
Okay. So, I guess the first, so I guess, you know, Mark's, the second motion would overrule the first one. Is there any discussion on Steve Rans' motion?
I have quick, two quick comments. One is, I think our Board of Health has shown that they have a predisposition to not taking any action on it. So, I don't know, we're gonna be any better off with guidance two weeks from now, Steve. And, and, you know, unless our motion was to direct this Board of Health to do something, I don't know that we can do that, although we appoint the Board of Health, so we might. But the other thing I just want to point out is, Tom, I'm gonna use your words against you here. Earlier this evening, you said, quote, "Long Meadow has a history of setting examples for other communities in the region." And I think this is a perfect example of where we need to set an example. Be, as I said, be the adults in the room. Don't push this, don't kick this down the road to our Board of Health. I think we know the right thing to do is, is to protect our, the health of our citizens, make sure our kids can go back to school safely, and vote down this motion to, to table this, this motion, and then vote for the motion to ban Halloween. I hate to say that, but I think that's the right thing to do.
Okay, any other comments on the motion? All right.
Can I just, can I get some clarification on it? If, if the Board of Health does not want to take this matter up, did you want a legal opinion on the select board's authority?
I think that would be a good thing.
That's a yes.
Yes, that's a yes.
Okay, so, you know, that's clear. I guess we'll do a roll call vote for the motion by Steve Rans to table this. Deb House?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
No.
Richard?
No.
Okay. And so, with that motion passing, Mark Gold's motion will be held until our next meeting, where we will take a vote on that with additional information. In the meantime, you know, Mark, you had talked about adding something from the select board that would say that we are discouraging, or we would not want to, we would not allow any permits for parties, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, so I, you know, I feel like, you know, the Ellington and Farmington and, and Green, Greenacre and that area, you know, that's, that's where, as Richard said, that's where the action is, and, and that's where the, I think, the draw for Long Meadow town areas is gonna be to go to those areas. And I, I believe those areas need a block party permit in order to do that. If we just disallow block parties and just allow regular trick-or-treating in town, or at least based on that document, you might inhibit block party permits for this Halloween season.
Okay, and as I look at the documents, I'm looking at, should we put that as number one on the list? Or should we put that as number eight? And I guess I'm leaning at number one. What would you feel, Mark?
Um, yeah, me, Mark? Yeah, yeah, I think that's, you know, that's the most important feature of Halloween that would, you know, potentially get us, get us in trouble.
Okay, so as number one, then we would say, you know, no block parties will be approved by the select board this year. Is that, would you, was that the best wording, or what would you?
Um, yeah, yeah, I mean, something to that effect, sure. No, you know, no, no block party permits will be issued this Halloween season, something like that.
Okay, Deb, did you get the wording on that?
Yes.
Okay, so now we need a motion to put this on our, our website. So, what's the motion?
Why would you ask for a motion to put something on the website that you've just deferred an action on a vote on whether we're even gonna have Halloween in our community or not?
Well, because this is regardless, I guess, that's a good question. Let me think about it for a second. And the CDC has issued these guidelines, and I guess part of it would be that between now and then, people could begin to look at some of the guidelines, and they may be on our side in two weeks.
I, I think it's irrelevant, I think it's irrelevant, Tom. I mean, that's just my personal feeling. You know, if we haven't made a ruling on whether we're gonna have Halloween, this, this particular information here is just like confetti. I, I don't understand the purpose of putting it out before the other decision's been made.
Well, if, if you read it, you would see that there are a lot of sort of basic things, you know, suggesting that people should do low-risk activities, you know, like in-house carving pumpkins, decorating pumpkins, decorating their house, virtual costume, Halloween costume parties, scavenger hunts in your house with household members. So, it really does have a lot of advice, if you look at it. It would help people find a way to make Halloween enjoyable, even if they are not allowed to go door-to-door. Mark Strange?
Oh, I, I don't, I don't think the document presumes that Long Meadow residents will only be trick-or-treating in Long Meadow. So, let's say, for example, if the Board does agree to ban Halloween, I think this guidance is still relevant for the families that want to go to other towns that they have Halloween. I mean, some of the stuff, obviously, in-house parties, that wouldn't apply. But just, just the recommendations would be relevant.
Okay.
We, we, can we not have relevant regulations coming in from about 700 different sources? I mean, this is being put under the guise of the Long Meadow Select Board encourages residents. This is not general law for the entire United States. This is very succinct to our community. That's the point I'm trying to bring back. We haven't even decided whether you're gonna have Halloween yet, in fact, that we're not gonna have block parties. The, the block, the block party actually is put in for protection of the citizens, to protect the children up there, so they can close the street. And if, if we still have Halloween, I, you don't think these kids aren't gonna come? Somebody's being extremely naive.
Right. Celebration has been going on for, I don't know, how many years, how many decades? I mean, all my life has been Halloween, and I can't imagine that people are not gonna want any advice. Did someone else wanna?
Yeah, Tom, to, to, to your point, and to Richard's. It says, "The Long Meadow Select Board encourages residents taking part in Halloween activities to abide by the following regulations." What it does not say is, "The Long Meadow Select Board encourages residents taking part in Halloween activities at Long Meadow, abide by the following regulations." I understand that the majority of that audience is gonna be people trick-or-treating in, in town. But if other, if they want to go to other towns, this is certainly helpful guidance.
All right. Okay, so, you know, the reason I, I put this, and I'm looking for vote on this, because it isn't something, you know, I would just put out without the Board's approval. I think it's a useful document. And so, I will forward a motion to have this put on the town website. Is there anyone willing to second it?
Second.
Okay, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, Deb, will you call for a vote?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
No, for reasons stated.
Thank you, and we will be revisiting this uh on our next meeting and, um, and hopefully it'll be an easier decision one way or the other. Hopefully we won't have less COVID uh problems, or um, wanna be so clear that we'll know, yeah, we can't do it. Um, and again, the state has not put any um edicts across, you know, statewide saying this is what they feel should be done on Halloween, which of course we would need to guide, or not need to follow completely anyways. Uh, okay, so now we go to uh vote and close the, and set the fall town meeting warrant. Uh, we've all received the document on this, and it is a, um, it's gonna be an interesting discussion, uh, you know, I, I have talked with the, um, moderator about this, you know, the concern is that we should really have a, um, as short a meeting as possible, because it is gonna be indoors. And the town manager had sent us an email uh earlier today um that basically looks at uh the fall town um meeting, you know, the warrant recommendations, and in her letter, she talks about, um, you know, the streamlining, the order of business, shortening the length of time everyone would need to be gathered indoors. And she suggests, uh, warrant articles ten, thirteen, fifteen, sixteen, nineteen, and twenty and twenty-one be removed from this warrant and moved to the annual town meeting warrant in twenty twenty-one. And this would reduce the warrant articles from twenty-nine to twenty-one articles. And the articles recommended for removal are not time-sensitive and can wait till the spring. So I, I think we should discuss that first, um. Lynn, did you wanna add anything to your memo before we discuss it anymore?
Um, no, but I am happy to answer any questions anyone has on it.
Great. Okay, uh, so what do people think about, um, moving those articles to a later date?
Um, this is Mark Gold, I, I, I disagree of moving Article twenty-one, I think Article twenty-one is timely. It, it impacts our annual town meeting and submissions to the annual town meeting. And to pass it now gives us a chance to have it implemented for that town meeting, if we don't pass it, we literally lose a year. The others I, Lynn's recommendations I would, I would support, but the, the intent was to, uh, to, to give that, uh, give us, give us more time to work on a warrant without having this specter of, of last-minute articles coming in from citizens' petitions, and so I, I think Article twenty-one should stay on this.
Okay, and for those, hope, hopefully you guys will pull up the, um, but it's really about the last day of filing petitions for the clerk, um, and, um, in pretty detail, so I, you know, uh, any comments on, on Mark's idea and, or on Lynn's idea? For the members?
I agree with Mark, I think, I, I think it's, I think that's smart. If we, um, take a vote and hopefully pass Article twenty-one, uh, this month, um, then we'll be ready to go for the fall town, or the, the annual town meeting.
Okay, any other comments? Yeah, I feel the same way, I feel the same way, Article twenty-one, uh, it shouldn't take that long to pass. Um, and it would, was in good position for the next annual town meeting. So if, I guess what we would do is we would need a, a motion then, that we would take warrant articles ten, thirteen, fifteen, sixteen, nineteen, twenty, um, and remove them from this warrant, um, if that's what other people are feeling, um, we can do that. Any other comments or, or do we have a motion?
Tom, I'll move to, uh, move warrant articles ten, thirteen, fifteen, sixteen, nineteen, and twenty. Uh, from this, uh, from this warrant, move to the annual town meeting in twenty twenty-one.
Okay, and do we have a second? Mark, you seconded, Mark Gold, um, any further discussion?
Yeah, I, I just like, I mean, we got the memo from Lynn and Paul Pesterzic, but obviously they put them on there for a reason, obviously we, we need them, I think. I just wanna hear the impact, cuz if you don't need them, why are they even on the warrant, you know, but if we need them, you know, it's part of, you just probably put them through as part of a consent agenda. I mean, they're, they don't seem to be controversial, any of those. I, so I just like some explanation about why we thought they were postponable.
I'll, I'll answer some of that, I mean, when you look at Article ten, Article ten was the, um, amended capital program. And not to say that we need it or not, but I put it on there for the Board to discuss if they wanted to move it forward. Um, originally it was on the, um, the warrant, when we did it back in March of two thousand and twenty and took it off when we went to the May, or the June, um, especially the June annual town meeting, so it was more of, what do the selectmen wanna do on that subject matter? Article thirteen, um, is just a minor correction that we did have a little bit higher number when it came to the chapter ninety money, and we need to make that appropriation before we can expend it. Six hundred and seventy-four dollars isn't gonna make a difference at this point in time, but we will need to do it in the spring. Article fifteen and sixteen, at some point in time, we're gonna have to, uh, or Article fifteen, at some point in time, we're gonna have to address, uh, we need to rescind the bond issue that's on our record. Um, we don't have to do it this fall, but at some point in time in the future, we're gonna have to get that off, off of our records. Article sixteen was something that the, uh, Community Preservation Committee had voted on. Just, um, re- re-appropriating money to, for the Wolf Swamp, uh, Field Project. Um, Article nineteen, basically all the, um, Charter Review Committee matters that we just went through over the last two meetings, that we're postponing now. And Article twenty began with something that there was a minor administrative snafu when it was first passed. We need to have that corrected at some point in time, if we're going to implement a, uh, a uh, an excise tax on short-term rentals. At this point in time, theoretically, it was passed a year ago, but it's not on our records because of an administrative error. That needs to be corrected also, if we wanna have that excise, um, charge.
I mean, I, thank you, Paul, I, I, it seems to me that fifteen and sixteen will pass in less than time than it takes to read it. I mean, especially when we're rescinding borrowing, I mean, they're, they're totally non-controversial. And twenty is an administrative thing that we certainly need to do, I understand where, you know, where twen- where a couple of these could be, you know, potentially into, into extensive debates, like nineteen and the charter reviews, and I get that. But why don't we just put, you know, ten, fifteen, sixteen, and twenty into a consent agenda and just pass them on one, one motion? I mean, that would be, you know, and if you wanna take out ten, that's fine, cuz it's expenditure, then somebody's gonna scream about it, but, but, you know, fifteen is something we need to do, thirteen is something we need to do, just, just do them.
Okay, I, I just.
You, obviously you thought that we didn't need to do it, but, you know, we, we, rescinding the borrowing, gotta get done, so do it now or do it later, nothing's gonna say it's easier here.
The ones that are being postponed are just not time-sensitive more than anything, they're, they're basically, for the most part, all needed. I mean, I, I would say, I mean, Article ten, you could probably skip, but the other ones are things that are needed, they're just not time-sensitive.
Yeah. So they, you know, the argument, uh, well, even if you put them on a consent agenda, there's always a chance, as you go through the list, you know, the people may pull one of those issues. And then it takes twice as long than one, it's not just voting on one thing, it's voting on two things, or if they pull more than one. Um, and, you know, the concern is really that, you know, given the contagion uh concerns, uh, of meeting in an enclosed space, and the longer people are there breathing, basically. I mean, it would be great if people could go and not breathe, it'd be wonderful, but, uh, wouldn't be much of a meeting. But because people are in there breathing, you know, we, we wanna keep it as short as possible. And in the spring, we can always do an outdoor meeting, uh, we had great success the last time. Um, it, it wasn't easy, you know, it was a great success because people did a lot of work. Um, and we're concerned about, I, I, I think people are justly concerned, you know, with how long the meeting would go. So that's why, I mean, I would just say we should probably remove these at this point in time. Any other comments from the Board? Um, yes, Steve?
Um, I would leave Article twenty in there, which could actually be revenues for the town sooner as opposed to later. And anything that would produce revenues for the town, uh, I think would be, uh, a good thing. Uh, the other ones, I, I, you know, they're not needed, they're not needed, and particularly something that takes that, even though it's a dinky amount of money, the one that requires two-thirds vote, you know, you don't wanna be spending ten minutes counting. But the one that says, you know, the six percent, uh,
Yeah, I think you got six percent on, like, VRBO renters.
Yes, I, I mean, and, and it's already been passed, I mean, it should be done, it's conce- you know, I, I think since that could be more revenues for the town between now and whenever the spring town meeting is, I think we should have that one in there.
Yeah, I appreciate Paul, you know, pointing out the fact that this was already passed once and, and it probably would pass again pretty quickly. Any other comments? Okay, well, at this point, we have a motion on the table to remove Articles ten through twenty, am I right? And so.
Is it ten through twenty-one?
No, not twenty-one.
Oh, you want twenty-one anyway?
Ten, fifteen, sixteen, nineteen, and twenty, I thought.
Yeah, ten, thirteen, fifteen, sixteen, nineteen, twenty is a motion, right?
Well, ten, fifteen, sixteen, I don't think thirteen was in there, was it?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're all in there except for twenty-one.
Yeah, um, so, um, and, and so, uh, is there, would you want, I don't know if you want to.
Yes, I would, I would amend it to have ten, thirteen, fifteen, sixteen, and nineteen.
Okay, so is there a motion or a, a second on Steve Marantz's motion?
Second.
Okay, um, so, good. Um, so that seems to be the motion, any further discussion on that motion? On the amended motion? Okay, so we will, uh, vote on the amended, I'm trying to think, we vote on the amended motion, yes, then we have to just get rid of the original motion. So, um, Deb, will you call, uh, for a vote on the amended motion, which would say that warrant articles ten, thirteen, fifteen, sixteen, and nineteen would be removed from the warrant? Call for a vote?
Tab, could you repeat those numbers again, please?
Sure.
The amended ten, thirteen?
Fifteen, sixteen, nineteen.
Nineteen, okay, got it.
So you should have five numbers, okay, um, so.
Okay, Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, um, and now we look at if we, there are the recommendations, um, for grouping of articles.
Listen, but we have to vote on the amended, motion as.
You're right, you're right, you're sorry, I, uh, it's only eight-thirty, I shouldn't be losing my focus. Uh, so, uh, the original motion by Mark Strange, um, you know, which was amended, but, um, so to, to remove all of the articles except twenty-one, uh, ten through, ten, thirteen, fifteen, sixteen, nineteen, twenty, so, uh, roll call vote on that, Deb?
Tom?
No.
Mark Strange?
No.
Steve?
No.
Mark Gold?
Um, I, I thought the motion was to remove those.
But that was inco- included twenty.
But we're voting on the motion as amended, so people who are voting no are voting now to keep them in.
Well, we already passed the amended motion.
So what's the vote, what are, what motion are we voting on, Tom?
We're voting on a motion that included twenty to be removed.
No, no, we're not, it's, it, that motion was amended. All we voted on was, the amendment was to remove twenty from Mark Strange's motion. Now we have to vote on Mark Strange's motion to remove ten, thirteen, fifteen, sixteen, and nineteen from the, from the warrant.
I stand corrected.
They know means we're not gonna remove those.
Okay, so, uh, given that, I would ask to, uh, retake the vote uh, because the amendment removed twenty from that list. And so we're voting for the reminder, the, the other warrant articles, ten, thirteen, fifteen, sixteen, and nineteen to be removed.
Correct.
So Deb, could you, uh, do another roll call vote on this?
Ten, uh, Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, and now we move to, um, some suggestions for consent agendas. And, uh, so Articles three through seven, um, which are pretty standard, uh, Articles, uh, had to do with community preservation, um, transfer, uh, you know, nine, ten, whatever, uh, these three articles, I don't know if there's any suggestions about, so um, Lynn, you put these together, I will let you explain, uh, Article three, the transfer of funds, transfer of funds, and reasonable.
Explain, you want me to explain the articles or the grouping of them as a consent agenda?
Yeah, is there any, uh, special reason you wanna put these articles together, these four?
Um. No, I, I, I can take it, oh, ma- mainly because they're all adding money to the FY two thousand and twenty-one operating budget. That's what they all have in common.
Alright. Okay, um, do people feel comfortable with that, taking three through seven as a consent agenda? Okay.
Larry Star is gonna do what Larry Star is gonna do, we could take the whole thing as a consent agenda. At some point, but to at least, to at least put them, you know, publish it as a consent agenda is fine. And, and that's not a knock on Larry Star, he's, you know, he got, he's a great guy, but, uh, the point is, we can recommend anything we want to, but town meeting's gonna do what it wants to.
Yes, and, you know, and there's limits and, and, but we did speed up things quite a bit in the last meeting, so, um, and then Articles nine through fourteen, Paul, uh, those are a lot of transfers and appropriations.
Yeah, nine through fourteen, now with the exception of ten and thirteen, um, basically all had to deal with capital, with the exception of fourteen, uh, which was a rescind, but they're all dealing with capital, I, um, I can't take that back. It's just that I think they were just the remaining ones left in for F, for taking care of the FY twenty-one budget that we grouped them together in that fashion.
Okay.
But a lot of them were, were capital items.
Okay, does anyone have any questions on, under that grouping?
I, I have a question.
Yes, Steve?
Um, well, thirteen is out, so we don't have to worry about that, but, but some of these numbers.
Um, well, thirteen is out, so we don't have to worry about that, but, but some of these numbers are, are pretty big. And I don't have any problem with it, and we're talking ones four hundred and some odd thousand bucks, other ones two hundred and some odd thousand bucks. Just to say, okay, we're gonna put these all together, let's vote on them. Someone will say, these are, I, I, yeah, someone may say these are pretty big numbers, shouldn't we be talking about it? Uh, that's all, because these are not little, little small budget items, they're, they're fairly sizable dollars. So, just, just a thought. If I, I have no problem bundling them together, but I'm just wondering if some questions may be raised as, you know.
Okay, um, does anyone else have any feelings about? How people might look at this grouping?
Well, what I'd like to do is bring your attention to Article twelve, actually. Um, I put that in as a precautionary warrant article. In case the, obviously people know we don't have a state budget at this point in time, we don't have the state money that Long Meadow is expected to receive. Um, should there be a drastic reduction in what we have projected at this point in time versus. What they plan on giving us, whatever they vote a state budget. Um, this amount is put in here as a precautionary stopgap, so we don't have to go back to town meeting. Um, it also potentially involves or does involve the MGM money. If there is any concern that MGM is not going to pay us. The two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, that is anticip- two hundred and eighty-eight thousand that is anticipated, uh, in FY twenty-one. Um, this is also a measure to, uh, balance our budget without having to go back to town meeting. Um, the surrounding communities agreement does say that they are to pay us almost no matter what. Um, I'm not overly concerned, um, but I did wanna put this in there in case. Something really went astray with those one or two of those, um, anticipated revenue streams.
And I think, I think that's perfect, I do think that it'd be worth the extra ten or fifteen minutes. For the town meeting to actually hear that explanation, as opposed to having it grouped all together, but. I think that it's, it's all legitimate and everyone should know exactly why this amount of money. You wanna move from one place to the other, because these are real concerns, but I think to e- explain it to the folks makes perfect sense to me. I think.
And, uh, now this is something that the board has, you know, dealt with in the past, where we have looked at, um. You know, we, we try not to move all the way up to the two and a halfs, two and a half percent. Uh, tax in a year, and, um, we've done a pretty good job of it. But this is really just a contingency, and so Paul, this, this would not be used. Uh, unless the state budget numbers were really problematic.
Correct, and this also protects your goal of not raising three hundred and eleven thousand dollars, because had it not been there. And something crazy happened, we would have been cutting into that three hundred and eleven thousand dollar goal that you had.
Mm-hmm.
So this also protects that.
Great, thank you, um, any other questions or comments on this? Alright, so then we're, when we look at this other, uh, consent agenda, we would. Uh, Stephen's recommendation is we do, you know, the, the nine through fourteen, but just pull twelve out. As a separate, uh, item. And do people feel pretty comfortable with that? Alright, I, I don't know, um, I think, you know, we can discuss these, but I. I mean, I don't really think we're gonna need to take a vote on these consent agenda as long as we have a consensus, right?
If, if we're writing them into the warrant, we do, because that's the warrant that we're approving.
Okay.
Please, are we gonna put them, that as part of the warrant, or we said something we're just gonna. Part of the expression wing it during the meeting, and somebody's gonna stand up and say, you know, oh, we've gotta re- reorder them, so number twelve goes after. What's now currently number fourteen, so that we can group them together.
Okay, and so we will, uh, be voting on the warrant at the end, right? To, to close it, and so at that point, we could mention these consolidations. Uh, rather than having a vote for each one of them and then voting again later. That's if people are okay with that. Okay, and then we have Articles twenty-three and twenty-four being pulled together, uh, any comments on those?
Yeah, I, I, I have a quick comment on twenty-four, I think it'll be taken up at the. At, at the town meeting, but I just have a, a comment. I think that twenty-four is written, doesn't reflect what I think I've heard people in the past say they wanted. This is the one that's the definition of a commercial vehicle. It says a commercial vehicle, definition of vehicle registered for commercial use, which has a gross vehicle weight rating of twelve thousand or more pounds. I thought people were concerned about panel vans that have commercial writing on them and that are. All decked out with, it's trucks that are commercial trucks and, you know, I, I did have an exchange with Lynn this morning, but would love to see that's, add to that. Or is a van, truck, or SUV of any weight that has decals or painted lettering that represent the commercial, represents a commercial enterprise? Because I, 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 otherwise this thing's gonna get, get argued over for four hours again. It, it may anyway, but, but the issue is the, is the, the commercial lettering ve- vehicle. That's not over twelve thousand pounds. A lot of them have non-commercial plates on them because people don't tell the, the DMV or their RMV that, that they're commercial. And I think this will get us to, better to what was represented at prior town meetings. When people said, we don't want commercial vehicles parked in driveways. Put them in your garages, and if it's a van, it fits in the garage, you know, but you can't leave them out overnight, so. My proposal would be to have twenty-four amended, that definition to add, or is a van, truck, or SUV of any weight. That has decals or painting, painted lettering that represents a commercial enterprise.
That definitely changes it very significantly, no, this, is this a, um, an article that was put forward by you, Lynn? Do you know where it came from? Alright.
Yes, it was.
And so, um. You know, you, what do you think about this, this changing to have, um, you know, lettering and, and so forth?
Um, Mark, just refresh me, was it the second piece of your amendment that we had talked about earlier today?
Right, that was the one, the one that I'm not talking about here, it's the one that you said was prob- problematic, but this one, you said seemed to be okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that amendment, I, I see, I'm fine with it.
Okay, and so, that's for twenty-four, and then.
I mean, putting twenty-three and twenty-four together as a consent agenda, I'm okay with it, I just think they're gonna be split out. By somebody saying, I object, but let's give it a shot for a, I'm, I'm okay to give it a shot for a consent agenda. But I just wanted to get that, that change to twenty-four to add it in the, the decals or painted lettering representing a commercial enterprise.
So, Mark, that raises a good point, though, if they stay together on a consent and it fails, that means twenty-three fails as well?
Yeah.
Right, so twenty-three to me is probably the most crucial. Um, given the issues we've been having with zoning enforcement, um, so maybe, maybe pulling them apart. Or leaving it as is, I guess, don't vote to put that on a consent.
Okay, so that would be. And, and you feel this is, this is pressing, this is something we should group until the spring, um.
Um, twenty-three, I would, I feel is pressing, twenty-four, if it's going to generate a ton of conversation, I would be fine with. Uh, keeping status quo right now, it, it's, I'd rather clarify it at some point, but I'm more sensitive to. Uh, the time that it will take to have the conversation.
Right, okay, that makes sense, so the, um, the byli- the bylaw, or twenty-three. Sort of puts a little bit of teeth into the zoning boards of appeals and, and planning boards by law. Um, but twenty-four, you know, we could. I mean, there, depending on how many people who drive registered vehicles show up, the discussion would be a long time. And it's, you know, and I don't know if it's, I mean, I personally think it might be that pressing. To do with this meeting giving, that is indoors and we have a COVID, um, situation. Uh, Stephen Rantz?
Uh, yes, well, I, I, I agree with Mark Gold's, um, position, although once, you know, once you start. But I think it should be moved to, uh, spring town meeting, because we have SUVs, what about my station wagon and? You know, what about the Mary Kay vehicle, I, I can see this thing really not, um, ending anytime soon at town meeting. So I, I think it's a discussion we wanna have, and I think it's a rule we wanna have. Uh, but I, you know, if, if Lynn thinks twenty-three is the one that's the most important right now. I'll go with that, and I would just assume defer twenty-four to a later town meeting.
Okay.
No, I, I, I think we made promises to people that this would be on the warrant, and if we don't put it on the warrant. Without getting, having given people the opportunity to do this as a, as citizen's petition, I think we're, we're, it's a misdeed, I. I think we keep it on and, and see, see what happens, I mean, there's, I've gotten a lot of calls, other people have gotten, uh, twenty-four. It's an issue, and, and to just push it to the, the spring, you know, this is something we already pushed to the fall from the spring. So it's, it's one more year that's gone, I, I, I hear you, Steve, and I think you're right, it's gonna generate some, some discussion, but I'd rather generate discussion. Than, than not handle it, because that looks worse.
But, but this is, this is a citizen's position, uh, petition, like?
No, it's not, but, but it would have been had we not done it, that's the problem. If we, if we had knocked it out a month ago, so people could have come back with a citizen's petition, my guess is they would have. That's the issue, you know, it's like saying, don't worry, we'll take care of it, don't worry, we'll take care of it, and then say, well, we're not taking care of it. Shame on us for having done that.
Right, but we're not doing it because we don't like the issue, and I think Steve is clear, you know, that we need to have this discussion in town. We need to let the legislative body, the voters of our town, make a decision on this. Um, but the question is, you know, when, when's the most appropriate time? Um, and, and people may not agree with us, they may be upset with us, I don't know. Um, how about other folks on the board about taking this, uh, Article twenty-four and moving it to the future meeting?
I, I, um, I agree with both Steve and Mark, I, I see both points. Uh, however, I, 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 um, I'm getting calls as well, so, um, and this is, this is an issue that's. Um, that's been prevalent for some time now, so I do think that we should keep twenty-four on this agenda. To resolve the issue, notwithstanding the fact that it's probably gonna be, uh, one of the longer articles.
Okay.
Um, yes.
Walter Gunn.
Walter Gunn.
Uh, since it's a zoning bylaw change, and I am on the planning board. Twenty-four, I still think is not right, um. I've talked with, uh, actually, we have a, a DOT state trooper that does enforcement in Long Meadow, I know he's been working on the Jake Brake. Situation, we spent an hour together on his, his laptop and his patrol car. And we're seeing definitions of commercial vehicles in two sections of the state law. That we're not following here, I, he, he already said anything with commercial lettering was probably. A commercial vehicle, period, regardless of weight, I don't know why we came up with a twelve thousand pound weight. Uh, there are vehicles in Long Meadow that say definitely commercial on the license plate, and I think. Um, we really need to delay this and, and, and really get it straight, it is, it, it's an important, it's an important enforcement. Thing, and a lot of, a lot of residents in Long Meadow really are upset about their neighbors, but I, I don't think it's well fought through yet, I really don't.
But Walter, the, um, the, the flip side of this is, is the, the vehicles that are clearly commercial vehicles. That aren't registered with a commercial plate, and, you know, who's, now, you know, you talk to the state police, they say. Somebody should pull them over and tell them they're registered improperly, well, our town police don't do that, that's not our job to do. So we're not part, we're not in the, in the role of correcting errors by the DMV or their RMV, we're not. You know, and so what we're trying to do is give our building and code enforcement group guidelines to enforce. What people in town want, which is, I don't want a panel van that, that clearly says a business on it. Parked outside next door to them, I don't care what kind of license plate it has on it, it's a commercial vehicle, in my mind. You know, and that's, that's what we're getting, and if we're gonna, you know, you know, nitpick over, well, it's, it, you know, it should have a commercial plate or it doesn't have. I, you know, the argument's gonna be at town meeting, pass the bylaw, and then let's enforce the laws, and if it turns out the laws supersede our bylaw. The, the, you know, the attorney general won't allow the bylaw, and then we'll start getting people into, we actually enforce the, enforce the registration laws. But right now, you know, I could go down my street and twelve streets around me and find fifteen violations of the. Registration law, and, you know, Steve, the, Steve Marantz's point about, you know, the Mary Kay vehicle that's got Mary Kay all over it. That's a, that's an SUV, it's a commercial vehicle. You know, and, and it, generally they have, you know, non-commercial plates on them. But we're not saying you can't have them in Long Meadow, all we're saying is put them in the garage overnight, that's all, this, that's all this. The, the, the other bylaw says, this definition defines what will be in the, what will be, need to be put in garages overnight, so. From my perspective, I understand the problems, you're absolutely right, Walter, but, you know, we, we've literally been. Now, two years of this, and we never get to it because we keep saying, well, it's definition, definition. Now we're gonna, I think we should set this definition, let the town meeting argue about it, if they can't get anywhere, they'll, they'll. Table it also, and then we'll get some rea- some enforcement going, but right now, we've got nothing and it's a mess.
Well, then who's enforcing, what we have now on the books in our bylaws, somebody should be able to enforce it, why is it not happening?
There's no definition of a commercial vehicle, so there is some enforcement happening, but it's not consistent. Because each situation is a little bit different and is getting, and so the first thing I did was. Look to say, well, what's a commercial vehicle, and there's no definition, so this was my attempt to try to. Streamline this to say, okay, is this a commercial vehicle, is it not? What is the, is lettered, is it both? And I'm still not getting a clear answer, I guess it depends on who you talk to. Uh, but it's making it incredibly difficult for zoning enforcement.
Okay, cause this, this will be, um, we've posted it today, it's a public hearing, this, this, this. Warrant article will be in a public hearing on October twenty-sixth, and, you know, the planning board to recommend this, we need. Um, you know, a hundred percent backing and, and, you know, information that will help us, you know, sell this. To town meeting the next night on the twenty-seventh, so, um, I'm happy to go forward with this. Mark and, and Lynn and everybody here, but, uh, let's just make sure, um, we've got the tools to go forward and. And, and make it work, because if it does get voted down, then we're off, this is off the records for, what, a couple of years, I believe. You can't bring these things back, so.
So let's hope they can bring them back.
I don't think so, Mark, not a zoning bylaw change, if it's voted down, it, I think it's a couple of years for you to bring these things back.
Um, Walter, to your point, there are multiple different definitions in mass general law for what a commercial vehicle is. Including in the registry, um, guidance as well, or the CMRs. And what I did was pull other surrounding communities and find out what they use for a definition, and it's all over the place. So, we developed one that felt like fit the best needs of us here. And to, in, with Paul Healy, myself, and, um, that bylaw working group.
Okay.
Okay, and, and you came up with the size as being a, a significant thing, um. So the, so I, you can see where the, with folks who have all these different definitions. Uh, all pres- if they all present them with the town meeting, that's gonna be, um, quite a long discussion, so.
I mean, if you, I get what Mark Gold is saying, I'd rather get this right. Than have it fail and not, um, be able to come back for a number of years. Um, so I, I don't know whether the answer is to pull it or to amend it right now.
There, there was a proposal a year ago that Stephen Crane put forward. That got s- pretty soundly defeated at, at town meeting, and it was mostly because, and this is probably my interpretation. that got pretty soundly defeated at, at town meeting. And it was mostly because, and this is probably my interpretation as well as anything else, is it didn't cover the, the panel vans, because it was based solely on weight, you know, and, and, and license plate. And that, you know, people aren't complaining that the license plate next door to me. It's that, it, it's, there's a business going on next door to me, and they they've sent, they've got an advertisement outside their house twenty-four hours a day. That's, that's the complaint. I mean, you know, and, and so that's why when I said this, looked at this, Lynn, I sent you that note, you know, to add that definition that says, you know, has decals or permitted le, or painted lettering that represents a commercial enterprise, that pretty much is what people complain about. You know, they, you know, clearly, if it's big, we don't want, you know, fifteen, twenty thousand pound trucks there, but I don't want the panel vans either. I don't, and not, it's not me. I think people don't want panel vans that are, and, and those are less than twelve thousand pounds. They're fully wrapped, lettering, and that's what we're trying to do. And, and you're right, Walter. This may not be the DMVs or RMVs definition of commercials of our bylaw and code enforcement.
Great, totally, Mark. Totally.
In terms of Article twenty-four, um, you know, that Mark's recommending, we, we, we add on uh a clearer definition of what a commercial vehicle is, and um we would, it looks like we want to separate it from Article twenty-three then, and uh and then the, the question is, do people, you know, so we just do that? We just keep it on and, you know, Stephen Rance?
Um, I'll, I'll, you know, since, since Mark Gold just threw back Tom's words at him. If, if you want to ban Halloween because of COVID, which is not necessarily a bad idea, you want to keep Article twenty-four on here, which could, which could last, which could extend town meeting for how, who knows how long it's going to extend it for. And while I agree, I don't want the panel truck next to me. I, I don't want the dump truck. I don't want that bobcat sitting next to me. That, that, that's, that's too twenty-three now, and with Walter Gunn's, you know, with, with the you know, possible complications and, and whatever's going on, I think we're much better off taking twenty-four up when we're not in a situation where we don't want this town meeting to go particularly long. And I, based on this conversation alone, um, I, I don't think that this is, I, as much as I think it should be done, I don't think, I don't think it's, I don't think, um, I think the um, the uh, the danger that COVID presents to the town in Long Meadow is greater than having a panel van parked to your house with lettering on it at this.
But I think that's a bait and switch, Steve. Have it on the warrant. Don't worry. You don't need a citizen's petition. And then pull it off the warrant after they can't put it in. I think that's just, I just think that's unconscionable, but, from us to do that.
Well, I, 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 I haven't done that. I don't, I.
Well, you haven't, but the town in general has told people, many people that would be on, and now we're going to pull it off. I think that's unconscionable. I can't imagine how we could be, there will be amazing ramifications for doing that. I think that's terrible.
Well, it's, you know, that, that's a question. So I, I don't know how we, we solve this. Do we want to take a vote on Article twenty-four? If it should be in or not, because um, you know, you, well, we have a lot of strong arguments for keeping it in and strong arguments for removing it. So I think we have to go to a vote.
Well, let's think about it. So I move, we remove Article twenty-four from the warrant and put it on the next town meeting.
Okay, and do we have a second on that?
Second, that's done.
Right, I will second that. And um any further discussion on removals twenty-four due to basically concerns about having extended it on town meeting? Okay, Deb, um, roll call vote?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
So can I, can I get a clarification? Um, so, so the, the motion is to remove, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Um, okay, I'm a, I'm a no.
Steve?
Yes.
Uh Mark Gold?
No.
Richard?
No.
Great, thank you. It will remain. Um, and we will, it will not be a consent agenda.
Tom, can I, do I need to make a motion that we amend that so that it'll say, well, where's a van, truck, or SUV of any weight that has decals or painted lettering that represents a commercial enterprise?
Yeah, probably, yeah.
Okay, I make that motion.
Okay, is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Um, any further discussion? Okay, Deb, roll call vote?
Mark, you gonna send that to me?
Yep.
Thank you.
It's funny, I'll send it to you again.
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
All right, so the last things is, is um Articles twenty-five and twenty-six, and it has to do with um building, you know, non-conforming buildings and replacement of a, of a uh non-conforming building. And the second one is for garages um and size of garage. So um is there a reason that we're keeping these on the agenda and why we want to put them as a consent agenda?
These were items that were on the May town meeting, and then when we moved to June and stripped the uh warrant down, these were moved forward to the fall town meeting. So that's why they're here now. Um, and we put them together because they are uh cleaning up zoning. Uh they're items that the building inspector has identified over the last year or so that have been problematic or inconsistent. Uh and these are the suggested changes. So Article twenty-five talks about a non-conforming building. It um specifically relates to a house that was destroyed in a fire, and due to the zoning, they would not be able to rebuild because it was a pre-existing uh permit. And um it's also can create some issues for getting a mortgage. Um if the lender, if the house is destroyed and you cannot rebuild with the existing footprint, the banks don't look too favorably on loaning money there. And then Article twenty-six is about um a detached garage. Um you can have a three-car attached garage, but you cannot have, but if you have a one-car attached garage, you cannot add two more garage spaces if it's detached. This was an area that was identified, even if you have the spacing on your property in the side and front setbacks, it still was not allowed. So this would allow something like that.
Okay, that sounds good. And, and if we're talking about having to garage commercial vehicles, we, it makes sense to have an item that would allow people to expand their garages. Um, any questions or comments from the board? Okay, um, so, um, yeah, I think.
Um, you want a motion to, to set up consent agendas?
Um, no, I think if we, because we've gone through this and we've said that uh we've had no difficulty with the consent agendas at this point. I think when we close, what I'd like to do is when we close the warrant, that we'll specifically mention the consent agendas that we've agreed on consensus. So if, do we agree that twenty-five and twenty-six should be together? Does that make sense? We're gonna put them on. Well, no, no concerns. Okay, all right, well, good. So we've gone through the uh, you have your memo, uh Lynn, and uh so now we look at um, the next thing would be to approve the warrant for closing.
Okay, Tom?
Yes.
It's Walter. Um, just, it keeps coming back up, but I have two citizen petitions, twenty-seven and twenty-eight, which are uh for the solar. Um, I just want to, for the record, I think twenty-seven was withdrawn at town meeting. I forget which article it was, but it was, it was withdrawn at the um June annual town meeting by, by the petitioner. So you should only need to have uh twenty-eight up there, and he is texting me on it, wondering why twenty-seven keeps popping up there.
Okay, because I know Lynn, you had spoke with the petitioner. Does this sound familiar?
Twenty-eight, seventy, twenty-seven.
Yeah, I, I did talk to him. I don't know, I don't recall if there was a vote at the June town meeting. I don't um on withdrawing it. I know it was continued to the fall town meeting. I don't remember withdrawal on, on that article.
He came up to the microphone and he, he withdrew it. Um, it's on, it's on the town minutes. I mean, he just withdrew it. It didn't have to be voted on. He just withdrew it. But, but actually, just leave it on there. It'll, he'll withdraw it again. So it's probably not a minor.
Well, if it was withdrawn, we'll, we'll verify those minutes. I, I don't know how it made it back on here then if, if it was withdrawn. Um.
It wouldn't matter either way, because then he will withdraw it again anyway at, at this meeting. So, you know, you're not wasting any paper. This is all digital. So I'm just pointing it out.
Okay, well.
Oh, Rebecca?
If, if I may, if uh the warrant has an article, any citizen is free to make any motion on it. So we can't rely on somebody withdrawing it. If it's on the warrant, it could be an affirmative motion. Uh so if, you know, we did, Mr. Friedman did withdraw, moved to withdraw, and we voted to approve, and I'm looking up the minutes now, but it makes, in, in my view, it makes no sense to include something that was already withdrawn and the petitioner doesn't want.
Okay, so uh we will not put it on the warrant at this time then, Lynn, and you'll just double check if there's a problem. Well, how much time do we have, Paul, to our deadline?
If you give me just a minute, I'm, I'm doing the same thing Rebecca's doing, and we're looking at those minutes. So.
Okay, all right. So that is uh twenty-eight, and then um we really, we really don't vote on the citizens' petition, but there's a citizen petition, Article twenty-nine, to amend the general bylaws on billboard signs and other advertising devices. And that's basically it.
So, so I just, I just pulled those minutes up, and there was an affirmative um unanimous vote to um to with, uh, let me get the exact language, uh, to take no action on Article thirty-six, and that was to allow, that was the first. Article thirty-six in June is Article twenty-seven in October.
Correct.
All right. All right, so um are we ready to close this uh warrant? This one might be, huh? All right, so what I'd be looking for is a motion to um, you know, approve the warrant with the um conditions that Articles ten, thirteen, fifteen, sixteen, and nineteen are removed. And that we have four, we have uh some, we have three consent agendas. One would be Articles three through seven, Articles nine to fourteen, but we would be taking the current Article twelve and renumbering it. We'll probably end up being fourteen or something. And then we would have another consent agenda of Articles twenty-five and twenty-six. And that's what I believe we discussed. Um, so I'm looking for a motion to accept the warrant on those, with those adjustments.
I think you need to withdraw twenty-seven as well.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Draw twenty-seven as well. Good. Um, and that would cover everything. And then the, the numbers would be re, it would be renumbered. Uh Paul, you're, look like you're, want to make comment or?
No, I'm on set.
Oh, good.
I'll, I'll make that motion, Tom.
Okay, that's made. And then a second to this motion? Okay, uh, any further discussion? Okay, we've had plenty of discussion. Great. Uh Lynn, uh Deb, will you please take a roll call vote?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
All right, great. Um, so now we uh move on to new business, and uh the outdoor dining liquor license extension. Uh we have two requests, one from Pesto and one from Max Burger. And um we have an advisory from the state um about the extension for outdoor dining. Um, and they've made some specific requests. So I guess we will, I mean, everyone has seen the materials. So I think maybe we could just go right to the requests, if that's acceptable to the votes.
Now, Tom, I'd like to place a motion on the table that we approve in accordance with the recommendations coming from the governor's office. Uh Pesto's request for outdoor alcohol extension and Max Burger's request for outdoor alcohol extension.
Okay, and is that seconded?
Seconded.
Okay, uh, any discussion on it? Okay, I mean, I think it's well within their rights, given the governor's uh requests, so um I guess we'll take a vote on it. Um.
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, that was quick. And now we move to our second new business, which is the approval of the state election warrant. Um, and it offers us the opportunity in town to vote for uh president, vice president, senators, representatives, counselors, senator in the general court, representative in civil court, and the legislature fullback. And a, a couple of questions. Question one and question two. Um, do I have a motion that we uh accept this warrant for sex, for elections?
So moved.
So moved. Seconded.
Seconded, okay. Any further discussion on the warrant? Hearing none. Deb, call for a roll call vote?
Adam?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
All right, well, we reached the end uh of our, our agenda items. Uh again, I'd like to thank the folks who made contributions to our discussions this evening. And I would like to thank the board for uh some very good and very robust discussions about the issues and um I appreciate the, the hard work you guys do in preparing for the meetings and uh, so I look for a, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second?
Seconded.
Okay, Deb, if you do a roll call vote?
Adam?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard? Richard?
Yes.
All right, good. Uh so our next meeting is uh October nineteenth, and um I'm looking forward to seeing you then. Thank you. Good evening.